This conference will now be recorded.
It might be better if we give folks a couple of minutes to see what appears here.
Is Patrick coming in? Is he also?
Patrick helps out the way.
Okay.
So I have to take it back.
Okay, I have the team for that. If you need my help, I'll go up with you.
So I know we're being recorded right now, but after this, we'll move it. I just wanted to put that on record.
Oh, thank you.
I distributed some of the calendars to the press release. But here's a couple of them.
I'm sure.
I want to make sure the team doesn't miss any.
Yeah.
No, Mike and I have to prove it. Mike and I have to read. I got to do the truth play, but I didn't. I don't know that I'll hear that we say a lot of activity. I think we make like every year. I think. I think it was.
So we're going to say, oh, we're going to be doing a special of that.
Basically. Not that it's a day thing, but we've done it just. How complicated life is a lot for a lot of people, not really helping what we're trying to do. I don't think. But in order for all these people to try to do. Anyhow. Just another. Also, right now, the group is a group. They want to be better down shy.
It's time. It's time. Art will be along. He has some technology issues or challenges.
Scott.
So why don't we get this discussion underway? Hopefully, hopefully, who will join us. One great topic we have on the work session agenda for this afternoon is a presentation which will, which I believe is directed to both boards. Yeah. Luckily, giving us progress, updating on how the land use code is going to be. Has been progressive and if you want, in the extent possible, to maybe gain a little bit of reassurance from the both boards that the direction that they're moving forward is maybe supportive that the boards will agree with or support or give us a different direction.
That's true. We'll start after all three.
With that said, you have the board.
So Scott, I'm not too sure you can see the map. Because it's kind of critical. I'll try to describe it as best I can as we go. If you have any questions, just raise your hand.
Is this a cord?
A cord?
How long does it be?
Roll it forward a little bit.
No, that's maybe four feet. We have here four foot cord. So we need a lead cord in the future.
Yeah. I'll try to describe the math area as best I can as I go over and I'll do this kind of like a woman. And Mayor's correct, this is, we're still in the middle of the process and remember, this is not what, this is not the final proposal. What we're looking for is, is this worthy of discussion? So that's the bar we're talking about. And are we at least on the right, up to place, in the right topics, moving in the right direction so we can take this kind of proposal to the public? We still plan to go in public, June May, May, June July, two and a half months of public discussion of this and we're still working out how to do that. And the new development director comes on board should be a key to that. And then that will give us August, September to write, to run the draft based on that. That means you can have your public hearing in October. We're still in line for, you know, a new revision to the land use code in January. So things are on track. I did not even, Scott, I didn't even give these to Anita because they changed as of this morning at about 10 o'clock. And so what we are trying to do here is on page two, correct? The first one should be the goals. What we were trying to do with this, I'm looking at my notes and I forgot. I have to give credit to the team. Bill Billinger, Jackie Kelly, Liz Clark, Dan Keller, Mike Ordichelli, Darcy Lefebvre, Art Devlin, Emily. So this, if you look at the very top of that, their goals are basically, you know, from looking at all the public information and from what we got from your particular, from your legislation, you really want to protect neighborhoods and promote affordable houses. But at the same time, you recognize STR with commercial use and it should be a legitimate commercial use in those areas where that level of intensity is huge. We identified three levels of intensity. One is hosted rental, that has no daily limit, it's one unit per property. And that'd be the similar intensity in some of our minds that it was a home occupation. The other one is a limited hosted, limited unhosed. You have a few days and one per property, more kind of like a rooming house, ready to bed and breakfast, you think you're back, it's that kind of intensity. And then there's an unhosed, which is not quite a hotel, but it could be a smaller hotel, which is up, you know, up to four per property. And after four per property, we're saying at that point, the intent uses so much, you really are a hotel. So we're looking at those different intensities of uses and then trying to figure out where they fit. And the first thing to look at is the existing North Alba zoning districts. And here it loads up. And this is what's so cool about it. There was a lot of talk when we had, when you did your public meetings, there are no commercial areas. Well, there certainly are. We stopped calling it commercial areas in 1991, 1990s. Up until 1990s, you look at the village and towns, I get C1 for commercial, one C2 for commercial, two B1 for village, one B2 for village, two. And those were commercial residential. In the 1990s, that thing was mixed use, so they don't call, they don't call them residential or commercial. But if you look at it, our corridor, you might as well put the word commercial in the corridor. This is our commercial corridor between the village center, the gateway corridor. That's our main commercial corridor. We also have a commercial corridor which is a little less used, which is our bypass corridor. So this is West Valley Road. Oops. I gotta learn how to not touch that. This is West Valley Road and so, you know, you have a wood shop, you have guys making springs for cars, you know, as you go down West Valley Road, you have some institutional things. So that's a commercial area. And of course, this going out is Comfort Inn, you know, Price Chopper, that's heavily commercial. And of course, this is heavily commercial. And of course, this is heavily commercial. This is your Main Street. We recognize that Main Street is a little bit different kind of commercial, but it's mostly pedestrian. Oops, I gotta stop touching that. We recognize that it's a little bit different because it's pedestrian, but that's commercial. So the idea then is if they're a commercial area, in this area, in this commercial area right now, you can have a hotel. So this is where the Marriott, this is where the Comfort Inn is, this is where the Golden Arrow, this is where, you know, the Hampton is. So this is our area which can have hotels. And it makes sense to us that that should be an area where you can have short-term rentals. Now also, this area, you can have hotels, you can have rooming houses. If you go down here, the hoods, you have a rooming house, players, you have a rooming house. Some commercial activities are allowed down here. This is a little, that'd be a commercial area where Big D used to be. You also have, you know, school, E-line. So that makes sense to us to allow, if you can have a rooming house, if you can have a boarding house, if you can have a hotel, why can't you have a short-term rental with less than four units or four units or less? And so if you look at that, one of the things we're proposing is this overlay which mirrors what you just saw. And that in your notes is the STRAC and it stands for access corridor. These are the areas again, and we're saying in these access corridors, you certainly can have an unhosed rental, because that can happen. And what we're saying is, if you can have a hotel, if you can have a rooming house, you should be able to have a short-term rental. Oops. There you go. You want me to start over?
No, that's totally, I wouldn't want everyone to eat.
So Jason, to go fast real quickly, this is the North Alba zoning districts. And in the North Alba zoning district, there are commercial corridors. This is Price Chopper corridor. This is Setmore Road corridor. Old Military corridor.
Yes.
Now, this is a little bit different because this is a village. This is a little different because we don't allow hotels, we do allow rooming houses. This is a little different because we don't allow gas stations, you don't want cars. But basically, those are commercial areas. In any of these areas, in these commercial areas, you could, as we speak, have a rooming house. And by the way, there's no limit on a rooming house definition. You have a rooming house of 99 rooms. You can have a bed and breakfast or you can have a hotel.
Many towns that incorporate the short-term rental law is no longer.
Wow. Weird. There is, rooming house doesn't. It exists in, in September. It was brought out.
Yeah.
No. It probably.
Still exists in the old military corridor. It still exists in the gateway. It still exists in. Something that needs to be checked.
Yes.
Things that need to be checked.
Yes.
In the language of the people.
Yes. But now we're agreeing.
Keep talking about it, that we're going to figure it out eventually. Keep talking about it.
Wow, that's part of the. That's part of it.
That's what we're going to do.
That's part of the proposal. So those areas, then what we're saying is, yeah, you can have what is, what would be a rooming, would have been called a rooming house, but would now be a short-term rental with four units. So we're just going to change that. And it could have been a bed and breakfast, but now it's going to be a short-term rental unit with four units. So that's for the access corridor. Now, this is also a commercial area, but it's a little bit different. So we really propose the same structure there, because you can have a hotel down there. Same structure, but it's a little bit different use here in that we want the first floor on Main Street to be commercial. So what we propose in the PC, it's the same as the access corridor, but the first floor facing the street can't be a short-term rental. So that's got to be, that would be, you could have short-term rentals on Main Street. That's a good place to have. But you've got to, we've tried to prevent those issues. The next one is, the next one's a little bit shock tricky. And we go down. Where would you allow a short-term rental unit with one per property on a limited number of units? Where would you, that's the question. Like, the town has already suggested that they like the rural countryside. And that would be what we are referring to as the limit. And that's the rural countryside area. And the reason the town said that is because these basically are larger lots, the nuisance isn't quite as great. All right? You don't have to have a nuisance issue. And the town basically said, we want them on those other areas. We did, we do have one controversial area that we decided as a group to add to it, and that's this. And the reason for that is a couple of things. One is, this is not a commercial area, but it's a lot, the housing up there would be a lot more like any housing here. Two hundred, three hundred people walking by and again. The other thing is, if you look at these lots, the assessed value is seven million, where he's picking one that's not developed, he's got a short. The set value of that particular lot is 17 million, 750,000 dollars. It's not going to turn into affordable. And the third thing is, if you look at those lots and you put in the short-term rental units, many of them are all of the short-term rental. So we feel that that area, although it's not part of this, should, really isn't a lot of ways part of that. And the reason, and the other reason that that's good is because if you want short-term rentals, you want them in a location where people will get there walking around. So one of the good reasons why we have the commercial corridors, that's public transportation. So people can, are renting out here, be able to build in the town without parking, and the same thing here. So we are proposing that this become a limited short-term rental.
We're starting to be.
Limited would be one per property for X number of days.
That's what they.
X. And now, what we should determine, if you look at the village boundary, that most of the lots are having, being in town, and we thought we would do that for the town 120. For, again, it's most because most of it's in the town, because two more lots in town than it goes. Secondly, you really want those to be two season rentals for 120 days, because you want people to rent here at the state, you want people to rent here at height. So for that reason, we said 120 days rather than 90 days.
So just real quick, as we go across the land on Main Street, what the term wise is that becoming of the floor?
Yes.
Why?
It would be unlimited, it would be unlimited here, it would be limited here. What we did is we stopped at where the, where the commercial corridor.
Call it both hours.
Reconsist. Yes. Call it both hours. And that way.
All the condos, the timeshares.
Remember condos are cut off. Condos are brought out. Condos can be rented with no daily limit. And that's one of the provisos that goes all over. The other proviso is you can always, wherever you are, unhosed rent, you know, you can rent your baby. That we kind of decided we want to do.
Well, it's a secret.
Now, don't get too excited and don't get too worried about, you know, you are bending a little bit. You're saying, okay, you can rent it for a big apartment. But if you look at the next one, which is the neighborhood protective zone, this is where we say there should be no more, no increase in short-term rentals. They are not, they're not grandfathered, they are sunsetted. They will, they will go away when the, when, you can, you can continue to renew your permit for the transfer of property, no new, no new permit. They will go away. When you, they're sunsetted and they're sunsetted based on the transfers of property, not a date certain. And we think that's safe, that's fair, because people bought this, they can open them, they can use it for this purpose. The next person that buys it knows what he can move it for and it's fair to change. This is how a village doesn't matter. How a village doesn't matter. So when you're saying, you know, we're saying, okay, you're stretching out, you're loosening up here, but look at all here. You're tightening up on all of these. You're tightening up on all of these, you're tightening up on all of these. And it makes sense for the town to go along with the tightening up, you know, that's one area.
But in theory, we're, we're tightening up, but if it's sunsetted, that could be a, this could be 2025, you're lost up. So it's not in a generation's lifetime to see it transform.
That's what.
You're right, exactly right.
Exactly right.
Same, that's where the litigation is going to be.
And that's, by sunsetting, we're saying, okay, you bought it thinking that you had this investment opportunity. We're not taking that investment opportunity. So we think it's better that way. And other word, the other thing is, we are a little bit worried about tracking. I have to thank Patrick, there's been a lot of quality challenge.
Isn't this cool?
Yeah. So this is, this is, this is our district. So we are, you are looking at 145 units that would be in the neighborhood protective zone that would go away next.
20 villages.
Even if I, even if I give it to my kids, you know, when I give it to my kids, it's a transfer of ownership and that would kick you into the front.
Okay, so that was, the other question was, for instance, an LLC, an LLC can live on the initial anticipts that they were to sell ownerships and home property along the way they took them. What we're talking about, we have discussions as far as, to make sure that doesn't happen.
There have been discussions. This is still, we don't know that. We have to, that's a council question. We have to talk to council. I understand what you're saying and I agree. And it could be that, I don't know, you could perhaps forget whether to change the presidency or change any of the offices.
Well, in the law, if you had any members, if you change any member, then it's change of ownership.
There you go. That's how it is now.
Was it?
Yeah. I don't like this. This came up a bunch of times.
Yeah. I just felt like, we, we did, we talked about a little.
I tend to agree with Peter, but I don't know and I'm not a committee, so I'm going to keep quiet. I think we can handle that if you have to talk about it. So, so any change in ownership, so, you know, things are going to change and things will happen. So we're protecting all those. So now I gotta go back to my chat. I feel like Louis Scott here. So as you see that, everything is pretty well covered. We do have a few other changes. I think I got a small one, I'm still trying to. Yeah. We included in the neighborhood protection zone, I think we still haven't checked on that. We included the cell science center in the neighborhood protected zone. Even though if they say it's be restricted, it doesn't matter, they can never get a permit up there. I think that's going to be, because it's a bit, it's a bit helping suspend it. They can't do a be restriction, they won't be able to do that as well.
There's a be restriction and Blueberry helps the people and children. And there's no force of.
So Blueberry, you know, that kind of has some organization for it to step up and.
So this would be a way to protect ourselves.
Yeah. And that's why Blueberry Hill was in the neighborhood. And so will be the cell science center, which is. Trust me. Oh, here it is. Cell Science Center. That's how.
So if you send that kind of going to this corridor, how far are any of that?
This going, like, no, just within the village. You see, we, one of the things we talked about was including this end of Hillcrest. This is going to turn off the. So this is, all of Hillcrest is a neighborhood. We did long discussions about, if somebody sells these roads here, it could be like this. But if you look at these values, there is a chance, there's a greater chance on Hillcrest that. It's 215,000 dollars, no, 428,000. So there's a chance that, you know, someone could buy that. An executive. So it's more, we, we talked about being made in a blue, just like up here. These houses, well, you know, it's, it's a difference between.
They're one of them.
One of the factors we're considering is, what are the options of it becoming affordable or at least approachable? I'm not going to call this affordable, but it's approachable. If we, I think if we found, one of the things we want to do with the backboard. We have a time slider on this, so I don't have it running right now. But we can check this every year and see how this goes down. Theoretically, this will go down, these will probably go up a little bit. So we can watch that happen in real time. And the other thing we can do is we can track it with some economic metrics. And if we find that this gets to a certain point and people say, oh, we can't come here anymore because there's no, we can kind of rethink it. So we can figure out, you know, this gives us, this dynamic will give us the opportunity to track the economic impact through the years as it goes down. That's another reason to do it slow. You don't, you never know what's going to happen.
But in theory, this is designed to migrate where it is now into places that the community as a whole feels acceptable. So I would think we've already run into a spot, you know, complaining with these blocks that need to be changed, where it's just going down central as opposed to going on Main Street or that's a street where you're just one or a little block, a road up over the hill.
I think that's true. And I think we've already established through our zoning laws that are existing there, if you buy a house on Main Street, you can expect, there's going to be commercial activity. And anybody who bought it, we did, in all honesty, we extended the access corridor out Setmore Road a little bit farther in 2011, but we needed a place to expand. We only have, you know, a three quarters mile on Main Street and we needed a place to expand. And so like before 2011, salt and year didn't exist either, nor was Chinese, nor, you know, a bunch of those stuff, some were grandfathered, but we needed a place. And so we chose that area. And it makes perfect sense. The people everywhere, the most people everywhere have, because it was residential, it was a commercial. We had that plant, we got it, we got it.
On the other hand, you got your major access road highways even out of the village, that's where you're not traffic. There's a general level of, or a general level of, you know, on high traffic.
But you can still, you can still live in it. My, my, you know, one of the things we do when you're the land use code, and we've talked about the, if you want to re-envision that corridor, you know, the different visions, I'm getting away, I'm going to get off topic. I lived in Old Ford, you go to Old Ford, the other side of Old Ford stand there, all the houses kind of into little stores. It's still a house, it's still a store, it looks cool. But if you go down Albany and go out and you see that the building is right by the roadside, which looks cool too. And we got to have a discussion, which way do we want to go? This, we're not going to do it this way. We've decided not to do that discussion. You know what that discussion has to do with, because that's not. We need that.
This is where we're going. There's no, we, the village, we keep talking about doing a moratorium possibly.
You got to.
We won't need a moratorium anymore.
Well, it's going to be out by January. Yeah. That's up to you. You know, we suggested that, one of the reasons we're trying to keep this a little bit quiet, because you want to avoid speculation. So if people find out that, oh, I'm not going to be able to open a short-term rental here in January, there's a real possibility that four or five majors get a license just for the heck of protecting their own property. So there will be some speculation. Keep out a moratorium to stop that speculation. I presented a moratorium to both county boards.
That'll be silent. I wasn't there.
So if you want to do it, I've tied the schedule, we think we'll have it ready by Jan. I don't know how much speculation it's going to be and I don't know if everybody's going to pay a couple hundred bucks just to protect the right, if they may want to rent it. I think they've had plenty of opportunity to rent it up to now, if they were going to go back route and God already done it, but it's, that's not my decision.
I guess this is something, maybe you talked about how to, they, you can't talk on the value of homes. Or is it, is this going to be phased in in a way that slowly, once it's been, the value of it, it would be a drop? There might be dips and raises, but not extremes on.
If you go back to the Kamoi report, Kamoi said there is no way to know what happens to the value of housing if you do this. Some people will lie because it's not, because it is a short-term rental. Some people will lie more demand for it because of neighborhood protection. And so Kamoi did the study, it was, if you look at that sector report, it was really a meta research. They did a lot of research, research, and they said, nobody knows. And it's, I mean, I, when we did the first short-term metal report, I spent a lot of time on the phone with an economics professor at Skid, at Wells College. And he was doing an exhaustive study for New York City and where they have real good, you know, they have two apartment buildings, one allows it, one doesn't. So you have a real, real control. And he said, I studied it, I stuck it. So who knows?
So it's just, the whole, the whole primary driver is development of like, the planned development of like, but also incorporating quality of life. And then whatever happens, happens.
Suppose, suppose we say you can't rent that and you lose 5% of the property. There's another COVID out in that, the land value is up here 110% from COVID. Yeah, who knows? Who knows? I don't, we understand where you're coming from and we basically said, we can't, there's no way to predict that, so we can't really get the decision based on that. But what we can do is trace it. If it turns out, you know, we can track all the homeownership and if it turns out it's going one direction or the other, runs for seen service. And we can rebuild. That's the beauty, that's one of the reasons that we are in for full-time development. Somebody that, somebody whose job is to track that, I do. There are, I think I'm at the bottom of it. We talked about definitions, Mike alluded to. You know, we, we do have to rethink the definition of a rooming house and hotel. It seems to us we're, we're looking at transients in general. Now you have hotels. Better way to explain it. You have, you have a hotel that's two units and they call itself a hotel. We think it's really a transient now with two units and they should be named two pronouns. Because we want to keep the nuisance in. So you're going to be the hotel by robo, you can name the hotel. Or I think there's another one up on, up by the pine, which is a four-room hotel. Not a hotel, it's four. We think it should be, it should be, we should redesignate things so you can't make a two-room hotel. If you're renting two rooms, you're an unhosed transient rental. There are two rooms on your property that you have. And so as Mike said, we got to look at them. We are in the process of looking at rooming house, boarding house, maybe what you did, what you changed last time, you may have to change again. But we have to look at rooming house, boarding house, bed and breakfast and hotel so that it's continual. That's actually a subject for our next, next use agenda. I have to say that these people, I don't think we missed a meeting, who's going to want to be in the office. I have to say that these people, I don't think we missed a meeting. Who's gonna want to be in the office? Every Tuesday, eight-thirty, everybody's there. It's interesting discussions. They're not shy people. I love it. They're really, you're lucky to have them off here.
Hey, Dean.
Yeah.
Uh, just a quick question, because I, I know you, you were talking about reclassifications of what is a, a hotel, or what is a boarding house, or, or whatever else. But some of these are in commercial areas. Just something to think about, um, because I know that we run into it all the time, is what they are going to be classified as for utilities. Um, because if it goes from a two, um, or from a hotel that's in a commercial area, we're charging them commercial rates. But then if it goes to a two-unit short-term rental where it's individual, are we now charging residential rates? Um, just something to think about, uh, because it's gonna fall back on us and we're gonna have to. You know, which, which direction to go.
There's no way it's not gonna fall back on you. One of the reasons, one of the reasons we push so hard for the rental permit system is to give you the option to do what you want to do. Without the permit system, you can't say, okay, if you have a permit, you better be commercial with it. So, you just, you, you can, we can't, Minya, look, I'm not, we're not gonna answer that question for you because, uh, I'm sorry, because the, the village rates are set by the village. What we are doing is giving you a lot of tools to do that.
Set by night.
Well, but whether you're a commercial or.
Which rate is higher?
The application of the. So, I'm sorry, I hear what you're saying, but I think it's not jurisdictional for us. But if you look at this, I think you have the tools, so you have your options to make.
Anybody, which rate is high? Residential for per, per unit, per gallon, for whatever you're talking about?
Well, yeah, depending on what you're looking at, um.
Well, you got a hotel on Main Street, peace hotel. Is it secret, is the gallon rate cheaper than a house?
It's a lot. It's more expensive.
Or is it less expensive in commercial?
Right?
So, the gallon, the gallon rate for peace hotel is less because you expect more buying, right? Am I wrong? I'm, I'm asking, but I don't know.
No, I think you're right. Yeah.
My point is, what's the difference? The guy has a whole lot. He has a bed and breakfast. If he has a short-term rental and he's, he's residential, you're getting more money from him. And they're, they're using more because more people are using the facility. If you wanted to charge them a commercial rate, you'd give them a little rate.
Oh, no, and I totally understand that. It's just going forward. That way, we know what we're supposed to classify it as.
The only, the only thing.
Right now, we don't know how it's gonna come out. You know, we don't know what. This, don't you consider it a people rate because it's more buying?
Yeah. The only thing, the only I can say, once again, we give you the tools. So, you will be able to differentiate between someone who has a permit and someone who doesn't. You, you can, if you want, if you don't have it, like says, if you don't want it, you don't need it, but you have that ability. The other thing we put into the short-term rental law is, everybody needs a meter. You know, when we, when we wrote, we suggested a lot of that in two thousand and sixteen. A lot of people had meters, so you, you, you have your options.
We got a lot of.
Yeah, but we, but we.
Well, that's something else that we're running into right now, too. All these, all of the, uh, the permits got issued, and they were issued with the, uh, respect that they were going to get a meter, because they didn't have meters in their homes. So, they were given them, and now we're fighting with them to try and get meters in their house. Like, we have seventy-five people that won't even call us back, but they have a permit.
Lose their permit.
I gotta lose their permit?
And if they don't, they're gonna get that. Those people, because they can't violate unless I have a list of who they're fucking. Yeah. You keep telling me that there's people that don't have meters and that you can violate it's horrible. No, I don't have access to your records.
Well, I also think that, about seventy-five, I'm wondering how many of those. Seventy-five, all of them.
How many, how many of them that's camped on these, and there's, exactly, these buildings that cannot be used. That, that don't work, that, you know, so they sign the things saying they have meters. The whole lot of.
Megan has all that information. I mean, if, like, what, if you have access to it, they're gonna send out a.
If they, if they sign that they have a meter, and they don't have a meter, and they're refusing to get a meter, that's a violation of the law. I will violate them. I don't, you know, teach it all yet.
So, so they send you the seventy-five people.
If I have to, they send people to send these letters, we share. And public letters. Now, we, we, in the session with committee, I forgot, they sent a letter out, you need to get a meter. And then, you know, then if they want me to start the process, I gotta send a letter out, say you violated the law, and you send a second notice, and then I can just write it down.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I mean, I suppose we do it at the same time.
Exactly. We try to get the language all in the second letter that they present out, and then it's not healed.
I thought, I thought we were in worship, but then, but then I just question.
We have counsel in our. There, there is a second.
Well, we love to have a consultation.
We have a government. I have work done.
They're really. I, I saw that. So, one of the nice things about the development director discussions, we, we suggested it might be an issue with which.
It's so far. But it, but it does coordinate. You see how coordinated that is, that's a good idea. And eventually, the development director will be at all the meetings too, so you'll have another point of, point of contact. So, it's a good. So, we're a candidate.
So, I guess my point is, uh, is this worthy of, I'm gonna go back on Tuesday. I was, I presented it to the village board, and they said, yes. Is it upper Parkside? Which way, which neighborhood is up upper Parkside?
Upper Parkside. Beach, beach portion. Uh, what I'm trying to think, when you talk of Parkside, you're talking about a park.
Yeah. So. So, uh, here's post, here's post office here. Right? Yeah, there's post office right there. So, uh, this is upper Parkside, that we talked about here.
Five, that's six. Yeah, that's six little. Left, upper support mid, water is nearly up into here, the beach part.
Now, remember, if there's condos, these, these aren't, these aren't allowed, these aren't allowed. They, they are, you know, they are currently in the village center. That's why, um. Uh, the livery stable, you know. This little.
I, I don't, I'm not sure what your normal features are.
I'm a guy. Really dry, where it intersects with, uh, Main Street and Parkside. That portion that represents where the dance courts are in public beach, uh, that's.
That's right here. Uh, this is the public beach, right? Yeah, public beach, right. So, so this is the church, and then these are the two places behind you, which are obviously, you know. The, the, the tan and the, and the orange and that.
The tan and the purple are basically the same. You can't, because you can put a hotel back there. So, if you put a hotel here, the tan, this is the same as this. The difference here is, it's on Main Street. That it's your question?
Yeah, yeah.
And I remember what other lawyer works on it. Yes.
And the same thing, man, if we look. Oh, I knew that. If we go out, and you're not quite as interested in this, but the same thing, we do the same, same. It goes like town in North Atlanta, goes way out here, so we did the same thing out in Ridgewood too. We follow the same activity. They're down, down into, well, this is Scarface. This would be town, the same as the town, you know, Scarface is basically the same about eighty, they're, they're half, they're a lot sort of like. So, we're bumping that. This is still corridor. We still have some neighborhood protected areas. This is, I think it's a BBC and a prison section, if I recall. But we are looking at this, you know, and one of the reasons is, this, this was targeted, uh, and the, the, the key to these is the APA. Uh, APA zoning is, uh, more restrictive than ours. What we did in two thousand and eleven is kind of trying to, this is a bedroom community. We, we increased the density and everything, so you could build a bedroom community here in a building direction. Uh, but the APA zoning doesn't allow, it's still a bit of intensity. We say you can build there, but the APA says you can't. We were, we were passing in, in part, thinking about that. But, but, but we took, for the purposes of this now, we did the same thing. So, the parts of San Actway with our village. And I don't, you know, we, we, uh, we, we, we did the same thing. It's more of a town than yours.
Same principles for like classes, we apply to the, to San Actway.
But do you even know jurisdiction in the village, certainly?
Uh.
Stuff that's the board.
Yeah. But they avoid, they avoid the.
But they do the bottom of their.
We did, we put it in there, whatever happened.
Yes. So, I, I'm going back to my question, and I guess I don't really need an answer, just.
It, it looks good enough to keep moving? Uh, yeah. But, but this, the next step is to share it with the public, the public.
Uh, yes, and we need, we still need to, we still have like four or five issues to deal with before we're ready to share with the public. So, the public would be managed by, uh, for public hearing type programs, and then, uh, the other goal is to stay early on. Um, it would be, uh, board, board, board actions reported in October to implement this.
Correct.
I, I think it might be a good idea, before we go public June, to roll it all out at once at a joint meeting of the town and village. And then go to a smaller public meeting. But that would be the rollout, and hopefully, we could do it up in the ballroom. We'll see what happens, you know. But it makes, to me, it makes sense to do it, to do a public rollout presentation at a joint meeting of the town and village boards.
Are we gonna be revising that draft on the.
Yes.
So, we. I know, I know presentation is nice and good and visual, but then.
Yes. You know, the one thing we didn't have when we, when we worked with the staff before is we did not have the technology or the fabric to, uh.
Yeah.
Basically draw the pictures and help people.
So, here's your S P R. And not only do you have the S P R, here are them all, but then, if you want, uh, here's the color coding. And then you can figure out, you know, I've, I've showed you in the dashboard, how many S P Rs are in each existing district, how many of each type are in each other district. And then we can keep track of the whole thing. So, this is, this is what you have right now. Uh, these are the unhoseds, there are two hundred nine unhoseds, there are a hundred and one condos, there are sixty three hosted. Dean, could you send us, be the F M word, this whole thing that you have?
Uh, it's your map. You own it. It's from Patrick. You have public. You own the map.
And we.
You know, the one I like is the, uh, is the hosted where the address is not.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, because I was under the impression the village we did, we, we're only doing unhoseds. We weren't doing.
Hosted is the one you want, I think, because that's what, I'm renting my basement, and I'm renting my basement so I can live here forever. But, but, but I was, just to draw your attention to is, we have a number of hosted properties where the property, the owner's address is not appropriate.
So, we have, we have.
Residency may not be.
We have a, we have a national map with you putting on that. We have a national map with the same dots. So, it would be an orange dot in Boulder, or an orange dot in New Jersey. So, we have, we have the same map of the owners with the same colored dots, nation-wise. And there are clumps of people in New Jersey. There's another clump out of Boulder, which makes sense in our. Um, and then there's, and then most of the fourteen-day rentals, granted, you don't live in my class.
Well, it doesn't surprise me.
I would, you know, like, rent the fourteen days, you follow your backs to the.
The permit.
Yeah. So, it's, it's sort of a no-go.
Yeah. I think it's, I, I would not suggest changing the law.
In principle, you know, some of these lovely homes that have been developed, maybe, and that's really all they want to do. And a lot of that's property. If you go out on the lake. You know, we kept Whiteface Resort. Whiteface is gonna be its own, its own little, older than I thought it would. Whiteface is a unique area, which was a P D, where it was set up as a resort, and we're given the conditions to operate it as a business. And we continue to provide that happening. But if you look at the lake, there are a lot. There's a bunch.
Looking, looking for food this morning.
Oh, no?
I know the description. Okay. I, I.
It's fun going into this, maybe, you know.
Oh, should we, just put one into.
It's a P D.
For what?
It's a different district existing right now.
Different district.
Yeah. They moved out of my home, we just found them in New York, got them different activities.
We have, we have interesting discussion.
Well.
We'll, we'll get back to that.
Yes.
Gentlemen, your feelings.
All this information we have because we work law, now we have the information. We said, we never had any of it, so.
We drove it out. I, I just, I just so, so happy. That's what we kept saying.
Pass the laws, we figure out what the heck to do.
Yeah, yeah. That was the whole point of it.
Yeah, I, I think everyone understood that it's just how, did we want to be strict and work early on? Or do we want to just be more strict and work early?
And now that we have the information in the dashboard, you can follow the metrics, you can determine what's right up. I mean, I mean, that's good planning. And hopefully, the, 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 the case of people in the area, hopefully, you get the decision.
This will bring out the law litigation. You're taking somebody's, your lawyer to value.
We don't know that.
Well.
You're taking away.
That's what they're gonna. Play out. And, uh, well, we only have one. There was, there was, I heard a lot of Stuart Littles on the board, like, we're gonna be rained down with multiple ones. But we only have one, so.
How many did you say?
There's a, there's a lot. I'm not, again, I'm not a lawyer, right?
I've been reading this in the planning manual. There's a lot settled in New York State law. When you buy a piece of property, you buy into the governance, uh, system of that property. And so, when they bought the piece of property, they bought into the zoning and the way the zoning could be managed. And there's a lot of, and I, I'm very, I'm confident about the lawsuit because that's, you buy a piece of property, you do due diligence. I don't want, I don't want it possibly to be zoned ever. I'm, we're not gonna buy a piece of property. That's your problem. And there's all, you know, it's, because they tried, people, every dis, we changed this to a commercial district in two thousand and eleven. Uh, well, uh, you can do that. I mean, that's, every, there's, there's, there's hundreds of district changes that take place in New York City all the time. And some people win, and some people lose. They've always said, hey, as long as you do it, we process you, okay? I think we did more than we thought. That's not the issue.
No, I mean, this is, this is very.
Perfect. We're, we're certainly moving in a good direction, and the, and the discussions are the type of discussions that should be taken place. The steps we took this past year, I, my view was that you began the process of common or community councilment. And, and getting out some of the red hot issues that were causing disruption. I, I probably shouldn't say that without asking Mike on the complaints we got this month, but.
We anticipated that.
I think we're, we haven't had complaints in the middle of December. And, and.
It's certainly calmed down around, in my.
And, and we've got a management tool now to work with that we did not have. So.
I think, overall, yeah.
Yeah, the sunset issue, and the one question I have for you, Dean, this is probably a legal question. Is, I, I've seen sunset agreements that have a specified number of years, and I want to find out if any of this, for example. And that, yes. Uh, and again, I, I believe, I'm trying to remember our committee discussion, discussed, we discussed the end of the contract, the end of your permit. Because you bought it, again, we thought that was fair. You bought it thinking you could use it for this purpose. Use it for this purpose, they get it to somebody else, that new bought person buys it, knows what purposes that it came out to. And I agree, I agree with that point, but what I'm thinking about is, instead of the sunset that might have an added item, uh, approach to it, one, one that might have a certain number of years. Obviously, the governing board, both boards, and I've seen this happen. And you can reach your sunset, they have the board, and the board, the boards can decide for whatever reason.
There would be some personal on this on those who are, are owners who are instrumental to, to be motivated, communicative, if they wanted to extend the.
Right.
And then at least.
And, and again, the other, the other thing, and I know, I know we're more concerned, our focus is more on quality of life issues. But the economics of it, plus it are another factor that ten years from now, they're probably gonna be a little bit.
Dean, I got one. How does the Z B A get involved? If somebody doesn't want to be, you know, for the transfer, they sell their house, and they put a Z B A, like, somebody couldn't help it.
Yeah.
And.
Kind of, it's not, the Z B A is very specific on what you do. Area, area, to, um, involve, very.
But it could not apply.
If you change the zoning, zoning applies. If somebody is gonna get sunsetted, if they sell it to somebody else, or you're gonna think, that's it. They know, you know, building residential, no more permits to be issued ever. That's it. They're done. And they think that law is inactive.
The, the Z B A's power to suspend is more on permits that are coming forward. Or decisions made by.
So, you, you know. You, you got, you know, they can, they can say, oh, given the configuration of your lot, we'll let you build a little bit closer than. But it's, it's, the Z B A usually weighs in on properties that are under, that are being.
But it's, it's, the Z B A usually weighs in on properties that are under, that are being reviewed and proposed. And they can suspend the law for proposed property, they can't suspend the law for a different property. You, you may get more, you know, articles, you're, 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 lawsuit. People try to fight that, that's the whole, that's their own app. The, and I'm talking about enforcement, if you're looking at the list, there's one other, and you talk to Mike about. What seems to be happening is enforcement happens on a CD basis. The only time that it fell apart once or twice was when people came, you know, dog, went out to dinner, dog's barking, neighborhood calls. Caretaker comes in and says, I'm not going to near the dog anymore. So what we're suggesting is, uh, an additional little, I think most people do it anyway, but an additional, if you, if you rent to someone with a dog. You have to give the cell phone of the person he's renting to that, to the caretaker, so that that situation happens again. But other than that, I think. Yeah, it's just, it seems to work pretty well.
You know, people, people are complaining about their neighbors because they wanna complain that their neighbors not doing.
The other, a lot of that, the other.
I'm not pulling a permit because of a couple of incidents from, from a couple of accidents in town, as long as it's rectified, when I get the complaint. The place where our person goes and big care business, people are, are there through the law and the owner is aware, and I have a conversation with the owner. Are you gonna stop it from happening again? You have a plan, it all works, and now the figurehead, go keep the play.
So now that you're here, so one of the, uh, I've heard local people who are either caretaker or going to clean that. Uh, there seem to be, the newest way to maybe, was expected to certain number of, 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 is, oh, I'm having family. And then I thought this up in the board, and it. Is there gonna be a way to, a periodic check of numbers?
You're gonna have to do audits through the system. Uh, just so you all know, we're also trying to be looking at different software companies. That will actually have the days for it and do different things, uh, today, right now. Um, and there's, uh, that's the price that will take to, to, to post complaint people. So that, that may happen in the next couple of months. But yeah, there's ways to do it, uh, and again, we.
So there's an intent, because this, this year was kind of a given.
Yeah. Twenty twenty was a good way for everything.
Yes.
Twenty twenty one, the clock started anywhere.
The other thing is we now have a handle on how many complaints there are. So like one, one incident could have seventeen complaints. And if you're walking downtown, you hear seventeen different people tell you, there was a problem, and you think, oh, there are seventeen complaints. But now we go, oh no, it was this incident, and so we got a better. Same person called seventeen times.
You become a product, meaning the fact, and you gotta deal with that.
So we got a much better handle on what the complaints actually are, how many there are.
Nothing is genetic reasons to need a complaint. But if, if I can get information and, and coordinate, uh, Mindy and I about the leaders, if they sign that affidavit saying. They were aware what they had to do and how they, they didn't do it, or they lied about it, or they refused me to do it, I don't, it's a big guy. So we just gotta, we just gotta get the big work together till it's one, one, you know, couple of things, couple of letters, and then you go.
Yeah, before we do that, I think the village, the discussion has come up, what are we going to do for the ones that we can't install in there?
I think that's. I think.
Right, I mean, if, if it's a physical mediation on the property, that's one. Who's gonna be the physical and boss? Who's gonna verify and then sign off on that?
I, I think that, that, and we will have a handful of properties where we are not gonna be able to, uh, install an interbride. And Mindy and I have had some discussions about that. We're gonna have to come up with a proposal about how we pre-fill us in the future, as, as, as compared to what we're doing right now, but. I think, I think.
If they don't have meetings, how do you charge them?
Flat rate. Well, you, you guys can have the flat rate. I love flat rate. One of the, one of the issues that we're trying to, uh, get our hands around is the fact that flat rate doesn't take into consideration property that's got. Twenty five thousand dollar pool.
Yeah, or, or worse, you know, the hot tub, they, they can't be, they'll everyone because of COVID.
So we have, we have some of those, those aren't, we have those things, but I'm afraid those aren't. And that's, that's not.
That's your guy. That's my problem.
That's your problem.
But again, we do have, we are beginning the tools to make this.
You know, I, I really, for the benefit of the series, maybe for tons, but I think they've done, uh, a lot of really good, solid work. They, and with, with all due respect for our professionals that are here. You know, keep in mind that most of those people are volunteers, they're being professionals in their own right, but, uh. They didn't design, you know, it's a new investment.
Fire updated from time to time, so a lot of it was, you think it's just a time, but I wouldn't say it was nebulous, but it was, it's actually. It's really hard to interpret if you're something, if you're getting out of the point, but seeing this, and then in addition, in addition to potential language. Then we can start to see something in concrete change.
And this is an all we were working on, and a lot of others, she wasn't doing. But there are a bunch of other issues we've already cut, cut through also. Some signage issues, how to differentiate between art and, and lettering, you know, what, you know, so we've worked our way through a, a whole bunch of things. We thought we'd present this one, because this is the one we seemed to be most interested in, but before we go public, it'll be a long meeting. Because we have a list, uh, you know, and we'll go through a leader to change the. There you go, well, this one turned out long, is there anything else I need to do, guys? Ladies?
I think you covered it pretty well, but the questions we're not asking are probably the questions we don't know that.
Okay. It's your map, if you wanna take a look at it.
No way to find it.
You gotta get the, you get the URL from, uh, Patrick, and it's fine, it's right, but you can draw it.
This, this technology is pretty.
Jason knows it more than I do. I'm not gonna be able to. All right.
At that point, Dean, I'd be, I'd sit, but.
Yeah, I don't know where it is, Patrick, show me, I don't know.
If you, if you, if you can back out of the cab, Steve, you can access.
All right. I got you, thank you. I thought it was free darn good. There you go, now it's gotta be, uh, setting, move up, moving up. And then, yes. Log in on the browser, scroll down back here, so I think that's what we wanna do, now it's gotta be powered up. Right, can you show me this?
This was while we made the package, that's supposed to touch this.
Well, I'll be locked down there. I think, I think I've just gotta pull a plug.
Clean it up, so it should be okay.
I got pretty down how low it is.
I, I'd be looking for something in the lower left corner.
Now the power button? It should be a power button. Oh. There you go, that's power.
I hope you get it locked down.
I need to see a little phone. You have a shirt on, you say? So the one thing we have with, uh, Cornell is they're coming in and are reconfiguring this room, I think there's a lot of them lost.
I mean, there needs to be a way to connect it to there, because for example, Scott really wasn't able to see your presentation.
Anita. Patrick said there's a way to, um, set the computer up when we have presentations on that and actually do the screen share through that instead.
I figured there had to be somewhere, so maybe we'll pop that in before the next time we do this. Sorry, Scott, that you couldn't see all of it.
So. I'm going down to, uh, Lewis on Thursday, I hope to drop off the jack on Thursday. Uh, yeah, I'm upstairs today, maybe.
I emailed you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean.
I was in Mrs. Winchester's class, said I didn't see Cindy, thought I said hi.
Oh, I will, she, uh, she couldn't go back until she got her letter from the doctor saying that she didn't have COVID and she just had a, a gastro issue.
Well, it's, it's aggressive, but it's.
I'm glad it's aggressive because it makes the kid safe.
That keeps us open.
Exactly. No, I'm totally fine with that, I was more irritated with the doctor's office, we'll get it to you, we'll get it to you, and I didn't get it till today, so.
Yeah, very quickly, just to finish up on the short term, there is a letter that's been drafted, um, and Janet has done some reviews and recommendations on it. But, uh, I, I think then you probably wanna put this into a form and, and make sure that it's suitable. But basically, it says it's your short term, I own this letter, it's to inform you, you must have a water meter installed. Uh, for you to be in compliance with the local short term law. Enclosed is a price list to show the cost of the water meter that must be installed on your property. The installation will be done by the Department of Public Works employees, where possible. Please, please fill out the enclosed form completely and send a check payable for the rest of the bill. Not the, and, and the specific payment put in there. Another sentence, this is your second notice, well. Which will not be followed by a third notice, failure to comply will result. In the termination of your SPR permit. And that's gonna be at sort of, you'll have a date, and, uh.
I mean, Mortiselli needs to see that, we can't terminate their SPR, only Mortiselli can.
That's right.
So he needs to, like concurrently, we need to do all this, he's gotta be part of the solution.
Well.
We have been doing it with him, he's been included on all of the emails, and when he said he was unaware that there were seventy five. He was the first one that I emailed when I got the number from Megan. So he's very well aware of how many don't have water meters, and he knew that they didn't have water meters to begin with, cause he got a list of, of the hundred and sixty two letters we sent out.
Same time, Mortiselli needs to send his letter out.
He just needed to refresh his number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Termination has to come from him, not as much.
That, that's agreed, and in the event that the village doesn't have a responsible, stipulated date, then that is termination wire. There won't be a third notice.
Yeah. So just on a, uh, adjacent note. In the village, no short term rental property may be rented for greater than ninety days. We don't have posted. I'm very sure, I mean, we do not have posted, I, I put up a law, it'd be.
We're posted.
I thought we had posted.
I only had posted. Posted would be our own.
Posted is the same law, posted, the town and village are the same law, to, when it comes to the categories. The only difference was the one twenty day. This is the village, it says not to be, no, Toronto, Toronto should be, uh, rented for greater than ninety days. Here we're promoting posted. That's, we wanted more.
It's like, who swore?
That's the, the, the true, um, Airbnb, that's where it used to be, it used to be hosted, originally. Cause I thought there was that, I have to go back and look, maybe it was a different version, cause I, I remember the email with Emily. You remember that, where she pushed the hosted, and then it was, enough in a way to get more people housed? But, um, it was like, no, you're creating essentially a business. I was under, I went all reviews.
I think, I think we need to take a look at the law specifically.
Cause we're seeing, maybe I need to look through it.
I, my, my understanding was that posted occupancy was mostly, we were, we were looking at our own residents, that, that, that sort of thing. But, uh, but quite frankly, you raised a point that it could be a difference here.
I thought, which is when I saw the different color, I liked.
But I don't think posted had, if, if I remember some of these discussions, we had posted, didn't, didn't put, uh, unlimited time to get it, so.
Exactly, yeah, so if we do have. But that, then I guess I want to review it a little bit more.
Why don't we do that? So, um. Anita, so we don't hold you up here forever, we'd like to just, just buy some word on where we are. Or maybe, uh, state's requirement that we all have, courtesy preparedness requirements.
Uh, basically, it is with Brian, he sends to the unions, uh, he already received it last week, so I'm hoping he sent it to the unions, but I'll follow up with him. Um, they need to have them by next Thursday, February fourth. And then we will give them a, um, a window of time to get back to us, and hopefully there won't be any issues. I think it's all fairly standard and across the board, and most of the, um, villages, towns, cities in New York State will be doing roughly the same plan as well. It shouldn't be an issue.
Again, the town and village, charity consultant on that, so, uh, it's just a case of keeping an eye on the calendar and dates, but I. With that, if you feel that you wanna move on, you're welcome.
Can I ask a question, Craig Brown? The election with the boarding machines.
Oh, yep.
Are we, are we not?
We're, we're working with Allison to get them, um, she actually told us she doesn't think we need them, she said that the school board. As more people were just like voting than we do, and they use paper ballots. Craig feels strongly, and I tend to agree with him, that we would like to have the machines, and I think, um, I think we'll be able to get them, like I said, we're working with her to do that.
We're not a third world country, I mean, we, we train the public and our folks with electronic machines.
I would, I would too, so. Yeah, I, I think so.
Do you mind that these ladies?
I, I totally agree with that.
We're sitting here for several hours, and all of a sudden, nine o'clock, they're gonna start counting dollars.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, and so I will tell Allison that the board feels strongly that, uh, that they want that.
And I, you know, I also think it, it's useful to be able to give the community the results, so people look for it at nine o'clock or nine, nine oh five at night.
Right.
So this.
I think our school district was one of the.
And, and that's one of Allison's points, she said, you know, you're going to be paying for each ballot, I said, I was, I'm pretty sure that. The village will find the money for them if they, they think that it's worth the investment.
We actually do have a little bit of money.
So I will get that across to her. It, it, it's easier for me than overseeing four people passing like, you know, two hundred dollars a night.
We'll just say we have eleven forty, two hundred people, that's people handling diverse. But then just, then the mayor will. That's what I'm saying, I just like the range, but I think that's still.
You gotta type vote, and all of a sudden, you gotta go read.
Exactly.
I can see my.
Majority will, will, on that, you, you get a chance, are you on that tier?
I think I'm on that tier, I haven't, I haven't actually set one up yet, but I think I am.
Good deal, Liam.
You're welcome.
Kimball. Kimball, are you with us? No, he's muted still, are we unmuted?
I think he is unmuted himself.
I'm waiting, I'm just on the phone quick with a customer, and I'll be. In a second.
Well, well, while you're doing that, then I'll just move on, uh, the, the next item under first, first is the police reform, reinvention, it's a responsible executive order two oh three. We are, we have, we have gone through the general policies of the department, and as of today, I believe the last two, uh, items that were. Were being considered have been addressed. What will happen in the next, uh, two weeks, um, again, we'll, it's, we, we have to have a conversation with the community. And what we're looking at as a format to do that is a virtual town hall meeting. That's being worked on right now, so, uh, I'll have more information for you on how that's going forward. The onus for this particular two oh three executive order is really not on the police department, it's on the mayor. And, uh, and every, every community with, with law enforcement, you know, it's doing the same thing.
They're doing it a different way.
We have, uh, well. There's a woman that, that the policies are being worked on by the department, Chuck, I, I think probably just had a big hand along with the chief. But remember that we engaged Teresa Willian, an O L consultant, she's doing a number of PD departments around the state, so, uh. We're, from what she told me, uh, we're, we're pretty much on track with where she thought we would be. Some communities are doing it differently, um, I think we, unfortunately, co- Some communities are doing it differently. I think we, unfortunately, COVID presents a problem for us in terms of an open meeting. I have, we're more than ten, with anything more than ten people. So we're looking at the town hall leading virtual meeting by environment, but I do it that way.
Is Q and A with the, with the lady and Chuck or?
Uh, no, no, this is strictly a listening program.
Okay.
Where people, it's like almost, in, in, in some ways, it's similar to a public hearing on proposed law. In that, in that we'll be, we'll be listening. We will not be responding. But the consultant will be, will be accumulating the topics. You know, I think, I think we'll, we'll probably hear varying opinions about our law enforcement unit. I'd like to think they're all good, but I suspect that there's a few people out there that might have different viewpoints. Given, given which side of the law they're on. So we'll, we'll, but we are moving ahead on it. So just so that you're aware that work has been going on on it. Lexi Poll, it's, it's been a major part of the undertaking as well. I'm not versed in that, so I'm not in a position to comment. Maybe, maybe a part for dear E could, but I see he's not there yet. Let's see here.
Craig, I was informed today that the police department does have Lexi Poll up one hundred percent and are in compliant with the governors.
That's correct. That is correct. A lot of work's been done and frankly, you know, I these executive orders coming out like they did are, are extra work for us and an extra expense because we were going to fire somebody. But the reality is, if our, if our policies are up to date, I think we as trustees can all feel better with that knowledge. This guy. Kim, are you ready to go?
I am. I apologize. I thought I had time to take the phone call, but then ran out of time in a hurry.
You, okay. Three or four items you wanted to touch on and go up and do that?
Okay, um. I, when we were talking about electric bills in the supplemental page, the tariff came up. And I believe that with Patrick, you know, if he was granted permission to help us work on it, we could get through it fairly quickly. So I would like to try to tackle that next week and get a draft, everyone to review.
Okay, I guess, I guess I can check with Patrick and see where we're at. And if, if, if there's a window of time for that, then I, I presume that's something you all agree to.
Uh, Craig, just as a note, I saw the email. I wasn't included on it, but Anita sent it to me. Of the changes that need to go into the tariff. There are numerous changes that the billing office wants to make to the tariff as well. And I know one in particular, we were discussing how the payment plan was going to be put into effect and that we have the authority on how we do that. And it's not specifically listed in there right now. So I, I think the billing office needs to be included in on that conversation. Unless we want to do it more than once.
No, what I was going to do is have Patrick chop it up and send the billing part right to you, Mindy, and you could distribute it however you wanted to. And then he would put it back into the body of it. What I don't want to do is every time you, um. Patrick can format the Word document fairly fast. I cannot. So that's what we need his expertise on more than anything.
Okay.
Breaking it out into working groups. And I think we could really get through it fairly quick. And it, you know, it might not be perfect, but it would be at least a foundation to build off in the future and something that is presentable.
I agree. Something has to be done. It hasn't been updated since ninety-three.
Speed is not up the essence here. It's better to get it right than get it fast. So basically.
I agree.
That typewriter print from an old Royal typewriter has lasted for a long time.
Yes, it has. We may want to take into consideration too, the service classes are included in the tariff. And we don't have our new rates back yet. Although Gian from NIPA managed to send us the ones from Watkins Glen last week, thinking they were ours. Um, we may want to wait to include that as well. That way it's all encompassed in one. He said, yeah, he's hoping that we'll have our rates this week. I'm not holding my breath, but maybe.
Well, it's, it's, it seems like they all, those. Streetlights, so Patrick?
Um, I'm going to try sharing my screen here. That's one reason I wanted to do this remote. Or does someone have to allow me to do that from your end?
I think you have to click the button on your side, Craig, that says screen share or give him permission to screen share.
See what's on there.
You have to make him the presenter.
Any ideas, Jason, on that part? That's beyond my pay grade.
That's what I was going to say. We have Jason on site, so we're all set.
So, so in the settings of this right here?
Okay.
Mindy, you got to walk me through. This is a little bit different than.
Yeah, I think if you go to people and then go to Kimball, um.
Actually, go to the electric department section.
Oh, the three dots, make presenter.
Yeah.
Make the electric department the presenter, please.
Perfect.
Make like plus a presenter. Just one right here.
Yeah, I think it did it. I saw it pop up on my screen.
All right.
And then Kimball, you should have a screen share option. There you go.
They're all, they're good? You're up.
Okay. Perfect. All right, so this is a map that Nancy Bernstein put together for the streetlights that we have on demonstration. And I'll email it to everyone. And then she included this page two kind of, the idea we want is people to look at the lights before they look at page two. Because page two has the prices of them and all the stats, so. I just wanted to share that with you.
So these, these were, these areas were installed, Kimball?
Yes, they have been installed.
Do you want us all to drive around at night and take a look?
Yes, please.
All right. It looks pretty good. You can see the difference between white and grayness.
And the picture I'm showing now is the end of my driveway. The light that's kind of our favorite has one drawback to it or one flaw. And I call it the back light here. So. There is a previous model without the back light that we could put if someone complains about that back light. I just wanted to share that with you. But I, I might have already said this, but most people that have went and looked at them can't tell the difference between any of the lights. And here's a screen. This is comparing, I'm waiting for it to pop up. Okay, the blue line on this is that light that I noticed the black light, the back light on compared to one without as much back light is the yellow. Up here at the top is the two lights that are being compared. Here's a picture of Saranac Ave. Unfortunately, I didn't take both pictures from the same location. They're almost the same, but this is high pressure sodium. This is with LED. So.
Kimball, I have a dumb question. Um, does, is there a way, because I know you mentioned the back light, and I've looked at the streetlights before. Is there a way to tilt the light so it doesn't go back?
There are shields that you can put on them, but I don't think a lot of people will. What it is, I reached out to the manufacturer and they, they knew about the back light and they said that they incorporated into this newer version because customers had requested it. So I don't think most people will even see it, but at least if someone does complain about it, I think we could put, put the previous model there to mitigate it. If we choose to go with that brand.
Oh, no, just to, my, my concern with we, we want to be as strategic and consistent of each one. There may be particular areas where that back light might be beneficial. But I want to avoid going down like say Hillcrest if you have one back light and not.
Oh, the back light would be a problem if, if it was lighting up somebody's.
So Kimball, is like Saranac Avenue brighter and lumens than Greenwood, for instance?
It is.
What is it at seventeen thirty-four?
What was that, Jason?
What is the difference of brightness?
Um.
I think, or is it?
Let's see. Fourteen locks. I forget what their target was. Somewhere around fourteen. So Saranac Ave ranges from thirteen locks up to fifteen point eight. In the lights that were installed there. That's kind of where my cursor is. And Hillcrest, Acorn, and Greenwood range from eight to, I guess, a lower seven point one.
Well, certainly, the, the LED fixtures are, I mean, Hillcrest, when I drive across it, I don't even think about the lights anymore. And, and the light is way more natural than it once was. I'm, I'm waiting for the day that Main Street is red yellow.
And if you notice on Hill, on the lower, the smaller fixtures that are on Hillcrest, Acorn, and Greenwood, there's a large price swing in it. They range from one hundred and thirty-five all the way up to two forty-six. Where with the fixtures on Saranac Ave, it's a little bit less of a swing. It ranges from one forty-six to one hundred and ninety-eight or two thirty-eight, so.
Who's installing the less expensive one? Or which one did you install?
We've installed all of these, so. They're all.
Are, are some of them LEDs and some of them high pressure sodiums?
They are all LEDs in these areas.
Okay.
So.
Kimball, maybe you can email us a location and the, the brand? So.
Yeah.
We would know the difference. We could say we're on Hillcrest, oh, it's this. We turn down Greenwood, oh, it's this.
I think that's, that's a good idea. And obviously, what, what we're also looking for here over time is that our annual streetlight cost I'm just, if we can get that chopped down from what used to be fifty-five thousand a year to something maybe in the high twenties. That, that's really the objective of this program. Aside from the fact that the lighting is different. Thank you for that. Kim, SCADA update?
I'm going to just kind of do a quick demo here. And. So here's some of the information we didn't have before that we can now get. Kind of, this men's into my barn road portion here. This is an example of what we don't want. Before, we never had a graph that we could analyze. So you're looking at the three currents and what you want is them kind of intermixing like the bottom two are. Before, we just could go read the reclosure. Now we have direct access to it. Such as right now, we can see up on Barn Road, the two reclosures that feed out of there. Hopefully, you guys can see this. I was hoping it'd be a little bit bigger on your screen. Are you able to see it or not really?
Somewhat.
Somewhat?
I can see it.
Okay. In one example of what we can do with the most recent relay SCADA upgrade is um relay index, substation one. Relay index, sub. We're going to go to circuit seven here. We're going to pretend that we're up on the barn road, but we actually are not. If I can find sub three here. Form six, six fourteen, or seven. This isn't going well for me. Substation number three. There we go. Circuit seven. So we are now, if someone was to call up and say that there's a carpool accident on Barn Road, we would be able to trip the barn road by simply hitting the trip button here if we were in the office. We want to open it. We're going to execute it. I just heard it open here. It's an unused reclosure. Says, in a minute, this should go from recloser closed to open soon as SCADA rotates, and it did. We're going to close it back in. We're now going to show that we have guys that are going to do hotline work. We're going to initiate hotline tag. Which will not initiate until it's been closed for thirty minutes, or thirty seconds.
And this is all happening from a keyboard?
Yes.
Amazing.
Now you're going to see the red light at the bottom light up to confirm that the hotline tag has been engaged. See it light up? So that was just kind of a quick SCADA overview I wanted to give you. Oh, there is one more thing. It was it's kind of awkward how you got to get around. So this is the new substation portion there, the one fifteen portion. And hopefully you can see this. The load that's being served out of sub one is thirteen point one megawatts right now. Sub three is nineteen megawatts. Our system load is thirty-three point six megawatts. So.
So.
Just kind of a quick overview.
Is it, is it a quick diagnostic tool? Does that signal monitor the network to see?
Well, the nice thing is, is we get alarms via our, our email that are reclosures open. That's the biggest thing. Because before, we had communication with the reclosers up on, on old Barn Road. Or Barn Road, you'd have a customer call up without power. You'd respond to whiteface in lane, assuming that it was one customer, only to find out that the recloser was open. Now we're notified that it's open, so it really helps in troubleshooting outage.
Nice. I always think of the money, money work, but what's the name of it?
And then I just wanted to go over one other quick thing regarding old, uh, Barn Road. And that was about a month ago, we had a carpool accident. So these right here are three switches that we have cut in. And between the substation. Now I'll pull up the map here. And I'm going to go to the substation. Which is right here. This is the pole that was broken is where the arrow on my mouse is. Between the, the substation and where the guys cut these switches in today. Which is this structure right here, I believe. This should be the location the switches are now. There are only ten customers. So if these switches would have been cut in place when that car. in place when that car hit the pole, only ten customers would have lost power. Instead, um, both grocery stores were out of power and the commercial customers on Saranac Ave from McDonald's to Price Chopper and Whiteface Inn were all without power for about an hour. So it's gonna be a great tool for the department.
And also, we've got some very unhappy clients to call the village because they don't understand.
And that's all I wanted to share.
Any questions for Kim?
Can we talk about the PEAKS project and sharing that for the study that you want to happen? It costs twelve thousand five hundred dollars. What's your proposal?
Sure. I mean, even if we don't want to move forward with the whole proposal while we're deciding how I'd like to at least do item two, which is to develop a certain circuit rating for the two thirteen KB feeders. So I think that portion of it would be not too much money. Or I could reach out to the developer and see if he wants to just get going on the whole study too, also.
I had a discussion with Ivan and during that discussion, he mentioned that he would be encouraging you all to get this electric guy on the stick here so that we, so that there's a measure of what the man was gonna need in that project. And Ivan seemed to think we might want to not go too far too quickly here until we have that. So probably your counterproposal right at the moment might make some sense.
No, Ivan, I'll call you. Kimball, if we hired PLM tomorrow to do the study, how long would it take?
The complete study or just to rate the feeders?
It's twelve thousand five hundred dollar proposal.
I, they did not list a timeframe on it. I could reach out to them tomorrow and ask.
If it takes two months, it's different than if it takes a week, obviously.
Okay. I will reach out and get a timeframe on it. I think some of it depends on how quick we provide information to them.
Pretty messy switches, aren't they?
It's the first three in our system. And I was able to provide Sparky a picture of them because they got three of them in a whiteface right over the bridge, so.
Aren't they the same that are in the sub one?
Very similar, just a lot smaller.
A lot smaller.
Now, there's one company that makes a version of this that's a lot easier to install, but they're a thousand dollars more expensive, so. We decided to go with the three hundred dollar version versus, versus the thirteen hundred dollar.
So we'll, on the PLM thing, we'll have some further discussion on that later. I mean, the one thing we want to do is, is if we need data to be able to when we get the things to add, be able to put that together, that certainly makes some sense.
Yeah. Kimball's point was also, we should know, we should know that, we should know anyway.
Absolutely.
With or without this development.
I mean, I'd like to at least get the two feeders rated. Eventually, I'd like to rate every feeder, but that can happen down the road, but reading these two would be great.
Well, knowing, knowing, knowing the rating on those feeders, certainly, I would think would put us in a better, more responsive position when the developer comes back with their demand. And we'll be able to do that more quickly in terms of what, what we need from the developer, what can impact the system. So if we can, if we can continue to work on that project, I think, I think it makes sense to do some of the steps. But it sounds, it sounds like we're, we're all sort of dancing around the same thought.
I'll reach out tomorrow and I'll get a price just to rate the two feeders.
And, and the timing.
And the timeline on the whole proposal.
Well, move ahead here. I've, I've got three or four miscellaneous items, but one of them is specifically good news, and that is that I have the reverse betterment agreement from the State Department of Transportation. I've sent it on to Ivan, Janet, and Brad to just make sure that everything is there. The good news is DOT is coming on board with the Main Street Project for the two point nine seven million dollars. I, I absolutely, we, we did not expect that.
What, what were we hoping to do?
We would have been happy with half that. But, but the reality is, this will be on the, this will be on the regaining attendance for authorization to with the resolution that's required and file of other documents, which we're gonna have to get direction on. But that, that, in Ivan's, in Ivan's way of math, that gives us about eight million dollars of funding on the main, it's related to Main Street. I'm not a hundred percent certain of that because some of it, some of it is tied to the water department pump house project. I think, I think Ivan's being a little bit forgetful that it's not all Main Street. But in any event, we're well over fifty percent, which was the goal that I thought the village could reach. The basis for that two point nine seven was a letter that Ivan supplied with breaking out all of the elements of Main Street that applied to the itself, it should be the state's cost. I didn't do that, apparently didn't expect things to rise to fifty percent.
It has to be.
Just quite knows. One more, one more piece of the puzzle that we can keep in mind that we're still working on the parking lot and that's a separate project, so. This, this just takes just a little, a little edge there, I think. I sent to you all today, Roost had an annual report and there's a video in there. Just, just thought you might be interested to hear how they were reporting out for twenty twenty as far as the impacts of COVID and what, what Roost was able to get done in the course of the year. I don't know actually what's in that.
We're gonna get the two feeders rated at least, get moving on that, and then.
We, we also, I was approached by Allison J D. The state has changed the early voting regulations and as you probably all read in the paper in the last few days. The location of early voting has to be in township within the county with the highest population. Currently, the county had advocated early voting in the public safety building over at Lewis, New York, which is really central to the whole county. Under the current state law, it's got, it, it, it goes, it comes to North Elba. Which doesn't make a little lot of sense from, from a, I mean, somebody at school in Berkeley's gotta drive all the way up here to vote. I certainly appreciate it. It's probably only nice for North Elba. But the areas that they're looking at, they've looked at the town hall, they've also, they're looking at the beach house. The significance of it is that they would need the meeting room and probably the, the primary lobby entry area and bathrooms for a period of two weeks in June and two weeks in October, late October for the upcoming elections. So.
To two thousand twenty-two election.
Right. So as far as, as far as living with Allison, I indicated toward, first of all, we have a tenant in the building. As we come into twenty-two, we're also, the community is building up for the winner university game. So the beach house, from that perspective, I think we have to have some conversation and understand what, what may be developed in there. No action needed at this point. I just wanted you to be aware that they were reaching out. And the other issue, of course, the beach house has is it said, well, there's a few parking areas here. Parkside doesn't have any more parking on it usually than the Main Street, unless we were to reserve spaces for people to come in and vote them. Hopefully give them fifteen minutes to get out of there. But more to come on that, I, I think we'll be hearing more on it. I left it with Allison that probably the first thing we should do is that she should walk through the space and see if they can meet their requirements. One thing that won't meet their requirements immediately is that the meeting room doors themselves, which are French, double French doors, do not have locks on them. They're gonna have to have some kind of a locking device because voting machines need to be secured. Whereas in this building, it might be a little bit easier.
Yeah, all the challenge, the challenge usually is that police officers help the developers, not us.
So there's a state law that isn't necessarily working well for the guy.
So if they use this room, for instance, Craig, then this room could be used for nothing else.
Nothing else.
Yeah.
It's locked up. So using, the, the idea of using that meeting room is community meeting room is also have to look and see what impacts. There was no mention of rent, but I would presume that they would pay some, we definitely have. So more to come on that. We, I talked about the short term rental letter, that's been worked on. I think you'll probably get, once we've got a little more consensus with Janet's work, we'll, we'll get copies of all the studies.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you for that.
And I apologize, that, between Mindy, Brad, and you, are you at least broaching the idea of how to charge those or what the process is going to be to essentially state that a water heater cannot install and what that's going to result in?
That would be a, a rate, can't be anything else.
But it's not a short term rental, it could be something else.
We may have to come up with a separate rate for short term rentals or something along those lines.
We might be able to look at it at a prime and commercial rate for those properties. I, I, we don't know at this moment how many there might be, there may be less than a dozen.
But that, that only implies the meters, there's also changes to the unneeded commercial, so if they don't need it, it can't be commercial.
Right.
Good point.
Right now, we only have six people that we can't get into their homes, but we don't know about the other seventy-five because they haven't gotten back to us. We have three that, which I find funny, won't let us in their home due to COVID, but yet they're letting rental people in their home during COVID. Still trying to figure that out.
So that's the, the one thing that I would see that would be if, let's say, ten to units, sort of rental units. Oh, we can't get meters in, so you're just not having, but then the others sixty-five are like, why are these ten getting off? Just because it's not possible to be, I don't think they would be, there's gotta be another sort of mechanism in place to make it equal.
Well, the determination is whether a property can have a meter or not is up in the jurisdiction of our department. It seems to be that we have as much control as we can have. If Brad's people come back and indicate that there's no possibility of installing a meter, and I, I understand there are properties like that. We'll have to look for the appropriate way of bill those out.
If you set with a great classification, that's our goal then, right? It's the only fair way. They just can't say, oh, oh, uh.
No, they don't want to give people, just part of clearly give people that option. The issue here is much in my mind as anything else is water conservation. You know, we want to minimize the number of those properties all the way there.
They would have to, those, even though those ten properties, I just said, the short term rentals, they could care less if the water, if faucet is empty or not. Sort of like, they're just gonna go home because they're in the village and they're not being used. We just want to make sure that like, I don't know, through economics, we want to make them more aware, but.
Well, I think as time goes on, as, as the village moves forward a hundred percent, either way, that would be the reasons for our wish was wanting to be under control of cost of delivering water. Other than that, we're, we're about two weekends, two weekends away from Kenan Pine Hockey. And like every other event in Lake Placid, we do not have from our health people approval yet for them to host their event this year. It's been, it's been kicked back and forth between Empire State Development and our county public health. We may by the end of this week have a response from our county health that may, because they're looking at the whole hockey activity things in terms of youth hockey. We may have enough widow room to get it done, but that's not, it's by, by far not a sure thing. And even though the supervisor's office has been involved in the conversation, I have not been involved in it. We have not been able to pry loose any, any widow room for, for that event. The sad thing is, it only involves thirty to forty and about thirty to forty percent of the number of participants that are normally here. It's an outdoor event in my mind. I kind of look at it as, it's not much different than a bunch of people who are skiing in Whiteface or, or out to, in Olmsted, cross country skiing. They're outdoors, they're in a healthy atmosphere, and they're pretty much when they're in town, they're, they're spread out for the most part. And when they are, when they are at the, at the ice facility, they have their own standards for dealing with COVID. That are, are not dissimilar from what I saw for the women's hockey, which is involved. But, but they are, they would be, the participants are either staying in the host hotel or scattered around the village. No different than any other number of people that would be in the village for the weekend. So we'll keep it informed on that. Every one of these events is different, dicey. And getting right now, given the pressure that the health, health people are under, getting any kind of quick response or anything that they don't have to respond to immediately, it's probably not something you can vote for. So just, just so you're aware of some of the stuff that we're all engaged in and aware of it. Actually, we did pretty well on covering most of what I had. Is there anything anyone else wants to question bring up at the moment? Going once, going twice? We call this for session material. Thank you all. I gotta tell you, I pinch myself all weekend long. Scared to death they would have called back and told me to put the desk home. I think I have two hundred and ninety-seven though. But I went back and looked at the ice letter and it's very detailed. So, and, and he's working, he's already thoughtful today. But that's one word, really good news. Let's see. Although, I'm, I'm, I'm sending back on, it's huge and long condition.
I missed it.
It set a new record, though. Three hours and fifteen minutes with technical support. Very end on the last device, she goes, well, the machine is working properly, so it's on your end, your problem. I will send you instructions on how to connect it.
Oh, good luck.
Thank you.
Who, who are you talking to?
Brother.
Oh, oh, the manufacturer of your printer.
Yeah, I got three of them up, work, working fine. The fourth one, we had trouble with. Microsoft doesn't seem to like us. So did everything go all right with Dean? Did, how'd you do, Jason? Did you get caught up? Good questions or not?
Yeah. I'd like to see eventually the map and the visualization help kind of take it from a conceptual to more concrete and seeing some, some written language, what was and what the proposed changes also move in that direction. So, yeah, it's, your updates kind of like, were like little morsel here, little morsel here. So he gave enough background knowledge. So as he talked, there's enough to kind of say, okay, this is what I was talking about. Okay, I get that now.
Yeah, that's like, what, six months of work or whatever we've been doing? Oh, my goodness.
No, I, 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 you know, the, the direction seems to be thoughtful, well thought out. And, you know, I think the, the sunset feature, you know, I, I have, I have, I think we all have our own thoughts on, on how we'd like that to work. But I, I think until we see that lawsuit litigation, hopefully, I, I personally believe we're going to win it. But I think that's why I did not rush in your decision.
You never know. Could be a March 7 decision by you to do it to 10 years instead of.
If I could, I think we're all in agreement. The protected neighborhoods was pretty straightforward and a good thing, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the other part on there was the areas that are gateway corridor. I guess the whole argument there, when I was trying not to lose the people that live on the gateway corridor, but as Dean pointed out, right now someone could apply and become a motel with two rooms and set up a vacation rental and get around it, not have to pay a permit and not be regulated. So that's where we allowed the 365 days in the gateway corridor. Did you guys agree with that?
Well, I, I thought that was always the concept that was talked about was the, the main, not just Main Street, but going from Hush Trumper all the way through and then through Sentinel. I always understood it. That's was what we were always moving towards to move them out of residential incidents to that boardroom.
Exactly. And then the third, the third part that he should have shown you, and one example would be around Mira Lake on the, uh, let's see, that'd be on the north side. I don't know how he presented it, but that's where they're saying at this point, that neighborhood would be restricted to a number of days. Dean keeps saying 120 because that's what the town is. And I just say, let's say a number of days and settle on it later. But how did you guys do with that?
I think the number of days makes sense. I think the difference between 90 and 120 back there. I, 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 my guess is there'll probably be more debate on that.
Shouldn't be all the same.
I agree. But you know, we all, we kind of went up, they came down, we agreed on 90. And then the minute we get all done, the town went to 120. And when Dean does this, he goes, well, it all should be 120 like the town. And I said, wait a minute. So I, I just think we should agree to a number of days, but not put a number of what it is yet. Or should we even allow people to use vacation rentals around Mira Lake? I mean, that's got to be our prime real estate. Why would we want to let vacation rental owners have it?
Yeah. So I, I do recall as Dean was mentioning your thought process, because there are people out there who prefer it not to be. The rationale is it's never going to be affordable, so to speak, for the $9 million, $7 million.
Oh, I think so, Jason. I mean, how many places can you buy a home on Mira Lake? And I do know people that live right now in that section. And I know one person that sold because he didn't like having a vacation rental person next to him. I think it cheapens the neighborhood, but it's a decision I guess we'll have to hand up.
I understood the premise and what Dean was presenting was hill grass were 350 to 400 would be attainable, $7 million. There's just a different socioeconomic class of individual that they're, they're, they're not even on the same field. Like it's me and Peter. So it's like, we, we, you know, we're, we're equal people. We just live in different worlds, but that's. So this.
It's, we can hammer out later, but it's something to think about.
Yeah, no, the March, so I looked at it and maybe there's one, I look, maybe our, you would have to, just in your back. The village, we settled on 90 straight across the board, but there are unhosed, with unhoseded in the village, which would make it go to 120, correct? Or hosted.
No.
Unlimited.
Unlimited. Hosted goes to unlimited, but non-hosted in the village right now is 90 days.
Well, hosted in the village is unlimited.
Correct. In other words, we're not trying, let's say that you have a piece of property and you've got a house on the property and you want to rent it out as a vacation rental. I don't have a problem with someone who's trying to make a living and living here. I just don't want these people coming in, their professional listings, never come to the village and take away our housing. But like I, I, going door to door, I've run into people that have houses and that's, that's part of how they live there.
Certainly. And then
What's that?
There's a short-term rental adjacent, but close to the street from me. Now there's a lady that's low with it. And now they, they went from 90 to 120. And I always thought, I thought we were, with that email, we were pretty regimented. And so I'm gonna, like I said, I had the March version, the late March of last year, maybe.
Jason, if she's in the village, it's 90 days, not 120.
Well, hosted is unlimited.
Well, if it's hosted, it's unlimited, yes.
But she like, but she doesn't live there. Like that's not her, she lives there, but it's not the owner of the house.
She's, yeah, that would, that would be a little dicey. She'd have to be the owner of the house and living there, in my opinion.
Although hosted via email.
Well, remember Emily was fighting for anything to get a long-term, short-term in the building.
Okay, maybe they got into it. Maybe I just opposed it, but that's.
Yeah, but I don't know that that went through, Craig. We, we'd have to ask him that and get a clarification. Because I don't think right now you can put someone in the house and call it a vacation rental uninterrupted.
No, we've had big problems with Emily. Yeah, I, I was like, I thought it was a dead issue, but I thought they could do that in town. I, I could be wrong.
Yeah, yeah, that's my understanding. The only variance was the 90. And, and we were all, we were all equal until the town jumped to 120.
Yeah, but the, but the unlimited, the hosted, I don't like that.
Well, remember, this is just a starting point. It's not an answer. So if there's things to work out, at least you got a chance now. If you know what Dean gave you, to think about it in your head. So when the time comes, we're ready to make a move.
Right. I guess it has to be your primary residence. You have to live there instead of hiring.
That would be, that would be my, that, that would be the way I'd want to interpret it.
Yeah, because that's not what I'm seeing. And I was just like, I was just thinking that. But I'll, I'll review the, make sure I have the.
Okay.
All right. Have a good one, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Good night, Jason.
Craig, did I miss something with the electric portion of that?
Not a lot. I think what we, we were talking about, the one thing we were talking, Jason, or Kimball did a, he, he shared some screens, which we were able to see that showed the new lighting up on Serenac Avenue, Greenwood Street.
Okay.
He talked about some new switching devices he's putting in and, and the benefits of what he did. All, all was good. Mayor, I think the important thing, we, we talked about the PLM study again. And there are a couple of things that, that came up. One, we don't know what the timeline is for that study for those two circuits up that are going to, that are going to feed the peak. And secondly, maybe, maybe instead of doing the full study, we, we do the, we do the study on the existing lines that are up there in terms of learning what their capacities are. Because Kimball's told me they're, they're already running fairly high. They're, they're not at their limits, but we don't know how much is, is, is left available. But I talked to Ivan and Ivan said to me that he's pushing Joe to get the, get his electric engineering people to figure out what the demand for the Peaks project is going to be because we need to know how much more they're going to load on those lines. And that's going to tell us if we have to have, if we have, have to build out those lines to carry more power. That would be the poller's expense.
Yep.
As I understand it. So I think, I think, I think Peter will, and, and Kimball will, they got a little bit of direction on it. We, we didn't, we didn't push it quite forward. Frankly, hopefully in a, in a day or so, we can have the other answers here and we'll, we'll know how we're going forward. But no, we should be okay on that.
Okay. Thanks for the recap.
You're welcome. I'm just looking to see if there's anything else that, I did so about. I, I, I did let the, the board know about the DOT reverse Betterment Agreement with the.
Oh, good.
2.9. And not a lot of secret on that. Our, I went back and looked at the breakout that Ivan gave DOT about what should be theirs versus what should be our expense.
Yes.
The, the travel lines. And the, he came up with 2.6 million. DOT just simply put 10% on top of that.
Nice.
Yeah. So.
It does sound like someone got to somebody and paved the way for us there.
I, I believe that's what's happened. And I think it was intended that it was going to be done quietly.
Yeah, very nice. Well, congra, you get an extra wine or beer tonight if you're choosing or both.
Yeah, well, believe me, I, I, when I, when I first got it, I grabbed a beer right off the bat. But today I feel a little bit more sure because we've had, you know, we've had a couple of days to, for Ivan to talk to his counterpart at DOT and confirm what we, what we have.
Okay. If, um, we, when you're talking to Cheryl tonight, maybe you could just tell her, I don't know if she answered me or not, but like I said, I was 10 minutes short of four hours with brother. So I haven't seen or done anything for a long time here. And also I got something also from Justin Roy, which came from Tori Hoffman. It's about six or seven pages of the volunteers procedures. I'll look at those tomorrow morning and I'll get them to you so you can see them. But I think it's just going to add to what we already had.
Okay, that's, well, that's good.
Yes. More the merrier. And then I'll find out what we think with Cheryl. Is it tomorrow, Thursday, Wednesday? No, okay.
I hope it's Wednesday. I'm, I've, I've got a couple of deadlines and I'm trying to keep, keep it, get finished up on.
Okay.
Okay.
Talk to you later.
Thank you, Mark.
Night.
I'm glad you got your other technical issue worked out.
Oh, we did. You know, job that shouldn't have taken 30 minutes. My goodness. I waited an hour and seven minutes just to talk to them.
Yeah. Well, I figured you, yesterday you had Scott there, didn't you?
Yeah, my printer just arrived today. It's a long story short, but we have, I bought the exact same printer in Florida and here. So we'd have the same machine. But the problem is every time we go from one house to the other, it takes 45 minutes to re-put the IP address in. So when our copier went bad in our office, I said, aha, I gave them mine and I bought another one that had a different driver. So we won't have that problem. But my goodness, getting it set up took forever.
Wow.
So I had to be my computer, Sue's computer and the two office computers. That's what took so long.
Well, at, at least you got it done.
That's right. All right.
We'll go have a beer and unwind.
All right. Talk to you later, Craig.
Thank you, Mark. Good night, Mark.
This conference will now be recorded.